Po, nawala po akong alam. May ma lang? May masabi? I am ready, Mr. President, and my office is ready to be investigated, that the truth may come out. At katulad po ng pagdalo ko kanina, ginung pangulo, sa ICI, nakahanda rin po akong bigyang linaw ang mga bagay na ito sa anumang forum o lugar at patunayan na mali, malisyoso, at paowang kasinungalingan lamang ang ipinupokol po sa ating pangalan. Maraming salamat, ginung pangulo.
Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we proceed with the reference of business.
The Secretary will proceed with the reference of business.
Bills on first reading, Senate Number 1331, anak converting the mountain province Ilocosur Road via Dakudak Pilipil Road into a national road and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
Refer to the Comedian rules.
Senate Number 1332, anak establishing a general hospital in the city of Iligan, province of Lanau del Norte, to be known as the Iligans General Hospital, appropriating funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
Refer to the Comedian rules.
1333, anak providing for the conversion of the Suyosigay del Pilar Road, located in the province of Ilocosur, into a national road, appropriating funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
Refer to the Comedian rules.
1334, anak granting full tax benefits to government purchases during a state of calamity and for other purposes, Senator Marcos.
Refer to the Comedian Ways and Means.
Senate Number 1335, anak urging the comprehensive planning, development, and export promotion of durian and providing funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
To the committees on agriculture, trade, and finance.
1336, anak converting the Candon, Santiago, San Esteban Coastal Road, located in the province of Ilocosur, into a national road appropriating funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
Refer to the Comedian rules.
1337, anak increasing the compulsory age of retirement for officers and non-officers of the Philippine National Police from 56 years old to 57 years old, amending for the purpose Section 39 of RA 6975, the Department of Interior and Local Government Act of 1990, Senator Marcos.
To the committees on public order and local government.
1338, anak granting civil service eligibility to government employees whose status of appointment is either casual or contractual and who have continuously rendered at least seven years of efficient service, Senator Marcos.
To the comedian's civil service.
Senate Number 1339, anak promoting Philippine indigenous and traditional writing systems and providing for their protection, preservation, and conservation, Senator Marcos.
Refer to the comedian culture and the arts.
1340, anak preserving the indigenous sports and games of the Philippines, Senator Marcos.
Refer to the committees on culture and the arts and sports.
Senate Number 1341, anak prohibiting discrimination, marginalization, and violence committed on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity or expression and providing penalties therefore, Senator Marcos.
Refer to the comedian women.
1342, anak upgrading the salary grade of dentist employees in the public sector, providing funds therefore and for other purposes, Senator Tulfo R.
To the committees on civil service, health, and finance.
1343, anak re-imposing death penalty for the crime of plunder, amending for the purpose RA 9346 or anak prohibiting the imposition of death penalty in the Philippines and for other purposes, Senator De La Rosa.
Refer to the comedian justice.
1344, anak strengthening the Pantawid Pamilyang Pilipino Program for peace through parents' leaders' adult education program, Senator Antiveros.
To the committees on social justice and finance.
Senate Number 1345, anak creating a congressional commission on agriculture to review, assess, evaluate, and recommend reforms in the Philippine agriculture sector, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes, Senator Marcos.
To the committees on agriculture and finance.
Senate Number 1346, anak amending RA 8178 or the Agricultural Terrification Act of 1996 as amended and for other purposes, Senator Marcos.
To the committees on agriculture, ways and means and finance.
1347, anak providing free access to government websites from telecommunications providers and for other purposes, Senator Tulfo R.
Refer to the comedian public services.
Senate Number 1348, anak separating the cities of Kimboyal, Longboy, Bulala, Kinapian, Indandangan, Kumanibe, and Makaag from barangay Suyop proper in the municipality of Suyop, province of Ilocosur, and constituting it into a district and independent barangay to be known as barangay Kinapian, Senator Marcos.
To the comedian rules.
1349, anak separating the cities of Kaingyan, Buta, Koskosnong, Longboy, Bangkag, and Butige from barangay Manatong in the municipality of Suyop, province of Ilocosur, and constituting it into a district and independent barangay to be known as barangay Buta, Senator Marcos.
Refer to the comedian rules.
Senate Number 1350, anak reverting the name barangay San Mariano in the municipality of Bantay, province of Ilocosur, to its original name barangay Salakong, Senator Marcos.
To the comedian rules.
1351, anak establishing a technical education and skills development authority training and assessment center in the municipality of Bakara, province of Ilocos Norte, to be known as the Bakara Ilocos Norte Testa Training and Assessment Center, appropriating funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
To the committees on higher education and finance.
1352, anak protecting the welfare of workers in the health sector by ensuring the provision of just and humane conditions of work and providing tax incentives for private employers appropriating funds therefore, Senator Go.
To the committees on labor, health, ways and means and finance.
Senate Number 1353, anak strengthening the practice of midwifery as a profession in the Philippines, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes, Senator Marcos.
To the comedian's civil service and finance.
1354, anak rationalizing the withholding tax rate on refined petroleum products, amending for the purpose Section 57 of the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997 as amended, Senator Aquino.
To the committee on ways and means.
Senate Number 1355, anak providing for the exemption of refined petroleum importers from the bond requirement under Section 160 of the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997 as amended, Senator Aquino.
Refer to the committee on ways and means. There is additional reference of business, you may proceed.
Additional reference of business resolutions. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6, concurrent resolution granting consent to Senate Majority Leader One, Miguel Miggs Eszubiri, to accept the grand cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun conferred upon him by the government of Japan introduced by Senator Legarda.
Approved. No, I mean, refer to the comedian rules.
Proposed Senate Resolution Number 124, resolution congratulating and commending Padal Filipinas for its historic victory at the 2025 Asia-Pacific Padal Cup held from 28 to 31 August 2025 in Selangor, Malaysia, Senator Villanueva.
Refer to the comedian rules.
125, resolution expressing the sense of the Senate to declare the last week of September of this year and every year thereafter as the National Family Week, Senator Soto III.
Approved later. Refer to the comedian rules.
Resolution Number 126, congratulating and commending the Philippine Padal National Team for winning the 2025 Asia-Pacific Padal Cup in Selangor, Malaysia, Senator Soto III.
Refer to the comedian rules.
Resolution Number 128, commemorating the 115th birth anniversary of Guences Laucu Vinson and honoring him as the perpetual symbol of hope and youthful leadership in the struggle against poverty, inequality, and corruption, Senator Pangilinan.
Refer to the comedian rules.
Resolution Number 129, congratulating and commending the Asia-Pacific Padal Cup 2025 Philippine delegation for emerging as champions of the 2025 APPC held from 28 to 31 August 2025 in Selangor, Malaysia, Senator Legarda.
To the comedian rules.
Resolution Number 130, commending and congratulating Padal Filipinas for clinching the championship title in the 2025 Asia-Pacific Padal Cup APPC held in Selangor, Malaysia and for bringing pride and honor to the Filipino people, Senator Go.
Refer to the comedian rules. The presiding officer stands corrected. The roll call, there were 21 senators who answered to the call of the roll, for the record. Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we'd like to recognize our distinguished colleague from San Juan, Senator Jingo Estrada, to take the privilege hour.
Senator Jingo Estrada is recognized.
It is just a manifestation, Mr. President. I am not avoiding the privilege hour. Mr. President, I cannot, in good conscience, let the remarks made earlier by our colleague, Senator Francis Pangilinan, during the Blue Ribbon Committee pass without rebuttal. His comments, while not naming us directly, were laced with insinuations, clearly aimed at me and former Senator Bongrevilla and the legal ordeals I have already faced. With due respect, such statements are not only unfair, they are malicious and utterly uncalled for. Mr. President, let me put on record. Hinahako po ang mga kasong isinampas akin. Dumahan ako sa mahabang panahon ng paglilitis, pagkakulong, at pati na ang mabigat na stigma na idinulat nito. Hindi lamang sa akin, kundi maging sa mga miyembro ng aking pamilya, na taon ding nagteis ng pangungutya, pangmamaliit, at panghusga. Sa huli, napatunayan na walang sapat na batayan ang mga ipinukol sa akin na mga kasasyon. Hindi ko kailan man nanaisin na pagdaanan nito ng sino man sa aking mga kasamahan dito ngayon. Mr. President, the courts have spoken with finality. To cast doubt on these decisions is not only an insult to me personally, but a dangerous affront to the judiciary. It undermines the very foundation of our justice system and erodes public trust in due process. Ginung pangulo, hindi ako tutol si sinasagawang pagdinig ng Blue Ribbon Committee. Ngunit, hinding hindi ko paihintulutan na ang kasulukuyang issue ay gamitin upang idikit muli sa akin ang mga maling paratang at sadyang impluwensyahan ang opinyon ng publiko. Ang mga kasong may kinalaman sa PDAF ay narisolba na ng korte, matapos ang masusing proseso ng batas. To insinuate otherwise is nothing less than an attempt to rewrite history and to malign the integrity of the judicial process. I urge my colleagues to exercise prudence, fairness, and much of all, respect. I too deserve to be heard and to defend myself, whether in this August chamber or before any court of law. I am more than ready to dismantle the baseless lies being peddled in the Blue Ribbon Committee, come hell or high water. And I will not allow discredited narratives to be weaponized for political grandstanding. I will not allow my honor, hard-earned and vindicated by the courts, to be solid by careless remarks. And I hope the committee, the Blue Ribbon Committee, will expunge from the record such malicious and unwarranted remarks that serve no purpose but to malign and mislead. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator. Majority Leader. Senator Francis Pangilinan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a very quick manifestation. For the record, there was no intention of maligning any individual in the manifestation we said earlier during the committee hearing of the Blue Ribbon Committee. Wala pong personalan gaya ng nabanggit ng mabutieng senador. Wala po tayong pinangalanan. Humihingi tayo ng unawa. Dahil bago pa nung hearing na yon, tayo po ay humorap sa judiciary. At dun din na pagtinalakay at pinag-usapan ang problema ng conviction rates, particular ng Sandigan Bayan. Forty-seven percent ang conviction rates ng Sandigan Bayan. Ibig sabihin, sa bawat dalawang kaso, isa absueltto. That was the context, Mr. President, of our manifestation earlier. There was no intention of maligning any senator with that manifestation. For the record, Mr. President, and again, humihingi tayo ng unawa kay Senator Jingo Estrada. Wala pong personalan 'yung ating earlier manifestation. I hope he will understand.
Thank you, Senator Francis Pangilinan. Majority Leader. Yes, you may respond.
Ang sabi niya po, ang sabi po ni Senator Pangilinan, wala ho siyang binanggit na pangalan. Pero napaka-obvious naman po ang kanyang sinabi kanina dun sa Blue Ribbon Committee. Ang sabi niya, "If I may quote, well, if I may, kumari ko siguro ikomento, is siguro kung 'yung napolis cases inauwi dun, halip na absueltto ay kulong. Eh baka hindi na nangyari itong mas malaking korakot." Those were the words of Senator Kiko Pangilinan. Sino ba ang pinatatamaan niya? Sino ba ang pinatatamaan mo? Di ba? It's very obvious that I was being alluded to. Remember, Mr. Senator Pangilinan, that I was acquitted by the court. Are you questioning the decision of the court? Acquitting this representation? You're a lawyer. I'm not. I shouldn't be, you shouldn't be talking that way. You are undermining the judicial process in our country, you being a member of the bar. Thank you, Mr. President.
May I speak?
Majority Leader.
Yes, oh, very.
Session is suspended.
Mr. President, session resumed.
Session is resumed.
Mr. President, we'd just like to recognize officials of the town of Lagonglong, Misamis Oriental, headed by Mayor Andrew Cabestran, together with the Vice Mayor and all the councilors and capitans are here today with us, Mr. President.
Welcome to the Senate.
Thank you. Mr. President, I believe Senator Robinut Padilla would like to also make a quick manifestation, Mr. President.
Senator Padilla is recognized.
Maraming salamat po, ginung mga pangulo at sa ating pinunong mayorya. Ginung tagapangulo, mga kasamahan, na isko lamang pong magpahayag ng saloobin, hinggil po sa ilang mga pahayag sa pagdinig ng Blue Ribbon Committee kaninang umaga. Na lubhang nakakabaha lapo. Na tila nagpaparating na maari nating isantabi ang umiiral na batas upang magbigay daan sa ikasisiya ng taong bayan. Bagamat lubos ko pong nauunawaan ang panghingibabaw ng kalooban ng taong bayan, meron po tayong mga demokratikong mekanismo upang isakotuparan nito. Isipin natin ang posibleng maging epekto nito sa ating mga komunidad. Lalo na po sa mga lugar na matagal na pong pinagsisikapan, itaguyod ang kapayapaan at kaayusan. Halimbawa na lang po sa Mindanao, patuloy po tayo na nagpapaalala sa ating mga kababayan doon na sumunod sa batas, na ang batas ay para sa lahat. Ang batas ay hindi hadlang sa kalayaan. Ito ang saligan ng isang sibilisado at maayos na lipunan. Ito ang nagbibigay sa atin ng proteksyon, nagtatakda ng ating mga karapatan at ang nagpapanatili ng kapayapaan. Bilang mga mambabatas, tayo po ang dapat na unang tagapagtanggol ng batas. Hindi ang unang lilihis. Hindi din natin dapat ipagsapalaran ang tiwala ng mamamayan sa ating mga institusyon at makibahagi sa pagpapalabo sa hangganan na tama at malinggawi sa tuwing may matinding suliranin na sumusubok sa ating diwa bilang isang nasyon. Kaya bongpuso po akong nakikiusap, nananawagan sa mga opisyal na pamaalaan at sa mga kasama po sa kapulungang ito. Hindi po pare-pareho ang sitwasyon natin. Hindi po pareho ang luson sa Bisaya at sa Mindanao. Meron pong mga katulad natin na umiikot sa mga liblib na lugar at nagpapakilala po ng batas na dapat sundin. Napakalulungkot po kung ganito ang ating pagbibitaw na mga salita na we can bend the law. Ipakita po natin na ang kalooban ng taong bayan ay maaring maisakatuparan ng alinsunod sa balangkas na makaturungang pag-iiral ng batas. Yung lamang po, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Senator Padilla. Senator Erwin Tulpo is recognized.
Mr. President, the distinguished colleagues, just want to make a point of manifestation. I was the one who said this morning that sometimes we have to bend law. We don't have to. The point is, there's a Latin word that says, vox populi, vox dei. The voice of the people is the voice of God. Now, let me ask you, Mr. President. Is our law higher than the voice of God? Is our law higher than the voice of the people? Mr. President, the law is supposed to protect the people. What we are asking, Mr. President, is the return of the value of good faith. I understand, Mr. President, what the gentleman from Pampanga this morning was saying, that it is not a requisite to return the money na kinuha po ng mga kontraktor, ng mga kumita po sa flood control project, Mr. President. Tama po yun, hindi po. At meron pong prosesong sinusunod tayo na kailangan sundin pag gumulong na 'yung batas, hayaan ang korte ang magsabi, "Mr. President, tens of thousands of people went out last Sunday." Narinig ko po. Hindi ko po alam kung mga kasama natin narinig. Narinig ko po 'yung sigaw ng taong bayan. Ibalik ang pera namin. Malinaw po. And I was asked by a reporter, by an interview, your comment. I said, "The message is loud and clear, Mr. President." Ayusin natin sa gobyerno ang ating mga trabaho. Iwasan po mahulog sa korupsyon. The people are demanding that these people, contractors, DPWH officials, including politicians who made wealth, kumita po sa flood control na kumari isoli nila ang kanilang ninakaw sa bayan. And I think that is the right thing to do. Ang problema kasi, Mr. President, Ang problema kasi, Mr. President, kung susundin natin ang batas, alam namang po natin ang pagdinig sa ating bayan ay buwan at taon ang inaabot. Baka pagdating po sa dulo, wala na pong makuha ang gobyerno sa mga taong ito. My only point, Mr. President, is the people were asking, the people are demanding isoli 'yung pera na ninakaw sa kanila. Meron po tayong batas, true enough, Mr. President, I don't disagree. There is ika nga'y process, may proseso, tama din po. Papaano namang po 'yung sigaw ng taong bayan? How can we pacify the clamor, the anger of the population, Mr. President? I have no answer. My only answer, Mr. President, is isoli po ninyo ang inyong ninakaw. No ifs and buts. Ang sinasabi lang po ng DOJ, kakausapin po nila ang mga taong ito. Kung pwede, isoli. Wala namang pong sinabi ang DOJ. Ito ang batas, bawal pong, ah kailangan ninyong isoli 'yan. The DOJ, the secretary himself said, "They will ask." But they will not force them. Depende, mas mabuti raw kung kung sang loob nilang isurrender 'yung pera, Mr. President. Wala namang pong nagbabawal sa batas na magbalik ng ninakaw. There's no such thing. And alam ko pong meron tayong process, we have procedures. But my only point is, Mr. President, whether I'm right or wrong, I stand to the wishes of the public, of the Filipino people, "Ibalik ang perang ninakaw sa kanila." Period, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Erwin Tulpo. Senator Padilla is recognized.
Opo, ginawang pangulo, napakaganda po ng mga punto na binitawan ng ating hinahangaan na si Senator Erwin Tulpo. Ngunit, alam niyo po, meron pong historical injustice na nangyari sa mga bangsa moro. Kung ang usapin po natin, ay sisingilin natin ang inang bayan sa mga utang nito sa bangsa moro at hindi natin padadaanin sa batas, eh para saan po 'yung barb law? Mapupunta na lang po kami sa gulo, mapupunta na lang po ito sa paniningil na hindi. Ganitang kailangan magbayad, kailangan ngayon na. Kailangan po dumaan tayo sa proseso. Ang atin pong saligang batas ay malinaw na nagsasabi na may due process. Kung argumento po natin, eh makikinig tayo sa sinasabing, "Ngayon na, ngayon na." Eh teka muna po, eh marami pong maliligaw. Katulad po ng mga kasama nating artista, halimbawa, sinasabi nila, "Kung ganyan, abe, wag na tayo magbayad ng tax." Eh papaano pong gagawin natin? Papayagan po ba natin na mga artista ngayon, huwag na magbayad ng tax dahil yun ang boses nila? Yun ang voice of God, yun ang voice of the people? Ang gusto ng mga tao, lahat ng tao ngayon ayaw na magbayad ng tax. Dahil saan nangyayaring ito? Ang gusto ko lamang pong linawin, ginawang pangulo, tama po, naniniwala po ako na ang tao'y galit na. Dapat lang po silang magalit, eh marami ng talagang ghost project, ang dami na pong nangyayaring ito. Pero sana po, sana po, intindihin po natin din 'yung mga kababayan natin sa malalayong lugar na humahanap ng hustisia. Madami pong mga kababayan natin katulad ng mga katutubo na humihingi din po ng hustisia yan. Pero dinadaan po natin sa batas, ang pagnanakaw sa kanilang mga lupain, ang pagnanakaw sa mga mineral resources nila, pero lagi natin sinasabi, "May batas tayong dapat sundin." Eh papaano kung isang araw gusto din nilang ng anarchy? Gusto din nilang magkagulo, gusto din nilang lumusob sa malakanyang, pumunta ng mindiola. Yun po 'yung mga bagay po na dapat po natin ding isipin. Ako po'y hindi kontra kahit nanino dito, eh ako po'y number one supporter ng lahat nandito. Pero pagdating po sa usapin na magtayo'y magkakaroon na naman ng pag-aaklas. Dalawang pong taon na po ako sa Mindanao. Alam po 'yan ng kapatid ko na si Senator Mig Subiri na umiikot dyan sa mga liblib na lugar para kumbinsin ang mga taong sumunod tayo sa batas. Yun lamang po, mga senador tayo, gumagawa tayo ng batas. Ang batas kailangan sundin natin, tayo mismo. Yun lamang po, wala namang akong gustong sabihin kundi yun lang. Maraming salamat po.
Senator Erwin Tulpo is recognized.
Mr. President, just last point. Hindi po kahit kailan nagnakaw ang bangsa moro. To tell you, kung mga kasama po natin, 20 years na pong nagikot sa Mindanao. Ako, lumaki po na Mindanao. Abinto Hulo, abinto Basilan, abinto Tawi-Tawi, abinto Marawi. Maru nga po ako magsalita ng tausog eh, pati anyway. Ang sinasabi ko lamang po, wala pong ninakaw, kaya iba po yun eh, paring... You're comparing apples to oranges. 'Yung bangsa moro po, hindi po nagnakaw, kaya 'yung sinasabi na kailangan kasuhan or something, hindi po eh. Ang sinasabi ko lang po, ito'y malinaw na 'yung sinisigaw po ng mga kababayan natin isoli. And that's my own opinion, Mr. President. We have to return it. Kusa po, kung gusto po, kung sincero silang maging state witness, gusto po nilang mapasok sa Department of Justice, then siguro po, in good faith, Mr. President, isoli po nila 'yung mga nakuha po nila. That is all, Mr. President, I have no further statements. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Erwin Tulpo, Majority Leader.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. President. Siya nga pala, Mr. President, meron po tayong maraming ice cream sa likod. Pumili po ako ng Ben &amp; Jerry's, pwede po kayong kumain. At anytime, pampalamig muna ng ulo sa mga ating mga kasamahan. Pero magaganda naman po ang mga layunin nila. They're all pushing for the advocacy, so we respect them. And in this August chamber, we allow these ideas to freely be debated and discussed. So, Mr. President, with that, I move that we consider proposed Senate Resolution Number 125. This is the resolution expressing the sense of the Senate to declare the last week of September as National Family Week. I so move, Mr. President.
Is there any objection? Here again, consideration of proposed Senate Resolution Number 125 is in order. The secretary is directed to read the title of the resolution.
Resolution expressing the sense of the Senate to declare the last week of September of this year and every year thereafter as a national family week.
Mr. President, to sponsor the measure, I move to recognize the distinguished Senate President, Senate President Vicente C. Soto III.
The Senate President, Senator Vicente Tito Soto III is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Majority Leader, thank you. My esteemed colleagues, I rise on a very personal topic to me and for all of us, the family. According to the 1987 Constitution, the family is the foundation of the nation and it has mandated us to strengthen its solidarity and actively promote its total development. It is not only the Constitution that mandates us to strengthen the family, but also the Bible. Deuteronomy 6, Chapter 6, Verses 6 to 7 states that, and I quote, "These commandments that I have give you today, that I give you today, are to be in your hearts. Impress them on your children. Talk about them when you sit at home, when you walk around, when you walk along the road, when you lie down, and when you get up." End of quote. As such, Mr. President, I sponsor Resolution 125. This resolution declares that the last week of September this year and all succeeding years thereafter be called the National Family Week. This resolution is not merely a symbolic gesture, but a reaffirmation of our nation's most fundamental value. Our nation is not only built on concrete and steel, but also in the foundation of the Filipino family. However, this foundation is being threatened by forces such as technology, the separation of the family by virtue of overseas employment. As such, this resolution, the Senate sends a strong message that we, the national representatives of this nation, believe and trust that the family is not merely a relic of the past, but a living and real hope for the future. Finally, my colleagues, this resolution is a simple but powerful act and the value to the social fiber of our nation is immeasurable. Let us, as a Senate, stand with the Filipino family. Let us pass this resolution and encourage everyone to actively participate in the meaning of this resolution, the family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, your Senate President. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I also received a note from the Office of Senator Christopher Bongo to insert into the records this call sponsorship speech.
Thank you, so inserted.
And also Senator Lauren Legarda, Mr. President. She is requested.
Noted.
Thank you. Mr. President, no member wishes to interpolate the proposed amendment...
Senator Padilla wants to be recognized.
Yes. Senator Padilla is recognized, Mr. President.
Senator Padilla is recognized.
Asalamualaikum po uli. Magandang hapon po, ginawang pangulo at mga kasama sa mataas na kapulungan. Ako po ay nakikiisa bilang co-sponsor ng proposed Senate Resolution Number 125 na inihain po ni Senador, ating pong Senate President Vicente C. Soto III, upang idiklara ang huling linggo ng septiembre bilang National Family Week. Maliwanag sa ating 1987 Constitusyon na ang pamilya ang itinuturing na saligan ng ating bansa. Sa Section 12, Artikulo dalawa, nakasaad na kinikilala ng Estado ang kabanalan ng buhay pamilya at tungkulin nitong palakasin ng pagkakaisa at kaunlaran ng bawat sambayan. Kaya't ang resolusyon ito ay hindi lamang simbolo kundi pagtupad sa ating tungkuling mambabatas. Noong 1992, sa Bisa ng Proclamation Number 60, dinklaraan na ang huling linggo ng septiembre ay Family Week. Pinalakas pa ito ng Executive Order Number 238 noong 2003. Noong namang 2012, sa Bisa ng Proclamation Number 326, idinagdag ang Kainang Pamilya Mahalaga Day tuwing ikaapat na lunes ng septiembre. Kamay kailan lang, pati ang malakanyang ay nagpaikli ng oras ng trabaho ng gobyerno upang makasama ang bawat kawanee. Sa pagdiriwang nito, malinaw, ginawang pangulo, ang lakas ng ating pamahalaan ay nagsisimula sa lakas ng pamilya. Iba-iba ang mukha ng pamilyang Pilipino. May mga OFW nansusumikap sa malayo para sa kinabukasan. May mga solo parent na pilip, pilip binabalansi ang oras. May mga lolo at lola na kumakalinga. At may mga pamilyang hinahamon ng kahirapan at sakuna. Gayun pa man, isang katotohanan sa pamilya nagsisimula ang paghubog ng dangal, pananampalataya at pagmamahal sa bayan. Kaya't nananawagan po ako ng wagawing makahubuluhan ang Family Week. Hindi lang selebrasyon, kundi pagkilos, parenting at marriage seminars, livelihood programs, child protection actions, mental health support, at disaster preparedness para sa buong sambayanan at sambayan. Bilang isang ama at lingkod bayan, naniniwala po ako kung matatagang pamilya, matatagang republika. Kaya sa ngalan ng bawat pamilyang Pilipino, buong puso po akong nakikiisa kay Senador Soto at sa kapulungan ito sa agarang pag-adapt ng resolusyon ito. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Senator Padilla, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would like to stand corrected. The good gentle lady from Antigua, instead of inserting to the records, would like to co-sponsor the measure. We recognize Senator Lauren Legarda, Mr. President.
Senator Lauren Legarda is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand before you today to co-sponsor Senate Resolution 125 expressing the sense of the Senate to declare the last week of September of this year and every year thereafter as a National Family Week. According to the PSA's 2020 Census, out of 109 million Filipinos, 108.7 million live in households. This is equivalent to nine out of 10 Filipinos living in households with their families. However, the weight of economic pressures and the changing social landscape has affected the family rhythm. Oftentimes, both parents and children are compelled to work longer hours to meet the daily expenses of the family. As a result, family time, once defined as shared meals and conversations, is sacrificed. What used to be a norm of sitting together to share stories, seek guidance, and build common values has now become a rare experience for Filipino families. Also, while technology has advanced and brought many benefits, it has also introduced new distractions, making face-to-face communication within families a scarce resource. Since the state is tasked to protect and strengthen family life as a basic autonomous social institution, it is only proper for this institution to help in nurturing and upholding the welfare and unity of Filipino families. Thus, I urge my esteemed colleagues to support and adopt proposed Resolution 125 to express a sense of the Senate to declare the last week of September of this year and every year as a National Family Week. Simple as it may seem, through this measure, we affirm that amidst the difficulties and distractions of our lives, the heart of the Filipino continues to be its strongest within the home. Let this observance be our yearly reminder that our progress as a people will always be measured by the strength of our families, the values we pass on, and the bonds we choose to keep. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Legarda, Majority Leader.
Before Senator Erwin, I think Senator Pia manifested first, but would you allow him to go ahead, madam? Yes, we'd like to recognize Senator Erwin Tulpo.
Senator Erwin Tulpo is recognized.
Mr. President, I would just like to manifest my support on Senate Resolution Number 125, which is expressing the sense of the Senate to declare the last week of September of this year and every year thereafter as the National Family Week. Families very important, Mr. President. Otherwise, we won't be here. If we don't have a family, we don't have parents who brought us he all here. So, I agree, Mr. President, and we should immediately pass this Resolution Number 125, and I support the said resolution filed by Senator Soto, the sponsor, and co-sponsor Senator Bongo and Senator Lauren Legarda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Tulpo. Majority Leader.
May we recognize Senator Pia Kaitanos.
Senator Pia Kaitanos is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to align myself with the sponsor, the Senate President, on proposed Resolution Number 125 expressing the sense of the Senate to declare the last week of September of this year and every year thereafter as the National Family Week. But, um, bago ho ako tumayo dito, ni-research ko ng konti kasi nalilito ako kung ano ba talaga ang siniselebrate natin. Family Week, eating healthy, medyo nagpatong-patong na siya. So ngayon, naintindihan ko natin, shishare ko din sa mga nakikinig sa atin para maliwanag sa atin kung anong siniselebrate natin. So noong 1992 pala, there was a proclamation declaring National Family Week. So it's just a family week, which is exactly the essence of the sponsorship speech of the Senate President. And then noong 2012, nagkaroon ng Kainang Pamilya Mahalaga. Mahalaga din? Mahalaga din. So, so sinabayan nga 'yung National Family Week na sinabing, "Let's all eat together." So okay naman yun, kasi as Filipinos, and I think worldwide, we celebrate life momentous events by eating together, so okay din naman yun. And then yesterday, si National Nutrition Council nagpahayag siya na eat healthy with your family. So dun ako magfo-focus, Mr. President, hindi lang kumain, eat healthy. So papangalanan ko na 'yung mga masasama para sa atin, 'yung sobrang mga soft drinks, 'yung sobrang matataba, sobrang matatamis, lahat yun. And everything in excess is bad. Siyempre, kung may celebration, hindi ko naman sinasabing huwag tayo mag-celebrate, diba? Pero imbis na 'yung jumbo size, kasi ano 'yan ha, racket po 'yan ng mga, ng mga fast food at ng mga, mga brands that sell unhealthy products. Ilalagay nila dun sa line of sight mo, 'yung mga jumbo pack nila, 'yung mga buy one take one nila, because they are addicting us to unhealthy habits. So, on that note, I join you, Mr. Senate President. Pero nagpapaalala lang ako, celebrate and eat healthy. Yun lang po, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you very much, Senator Pia Kaitano, Majority Leader.
May we recognize as well Senator Risa Ontiveros, Deputy Majority Leader.
Yeah, Senator Risa Ontiveros is recognized. Yeah, Senator Risa Ontiveros is recognized.
Salamat po, Mr. President. I rise in strong support of Proposed Resolution Number 125, declaring the last week of September as National Family Week. Panahon palagi para alalahanin at alagaan ang ating pamilya. The senate president is right. There is an assault of technology on the family. Sa panahon ng AI at social media, hindi lang oras ang ninanakaw, pati ang kaligtasa ng ating mga anak. AI can create fake child abuse images and deep fakes. Walang pisikal na krimen, pero totoo ang trauma. AI chatbots can groom and extort. Nagaan 'yung kaibigan, pero panganib pala. Itupoy napagalaman ng ating komite sa Committee on Women, Children, Family Relations, and Gender Equality sa nakaraan nating hearing. Dagdag pa rito, milyong-milyong OFWs ang napipilitang mahiwalay sa kanilang pamilya upang mabuhay, gaya ng binanggit din ni senate president. Solo Parents shoulder double burdens. Kadalasan mag-isa, habang hinaharap ang parehong digital at pang-araw-araw na panganib. Alam yan ni SP, dahil pinasan natin ang Solo Parents Welfare Act noong nakaraang kongreso sa ilalim ng kanyang liderato. National Family Week must also mean family protection and support, mula sa mas matibay na batas, laban sa AI facilitated exploitation, hanggang sa mental health care, at konkretong tulong para sa OFWs at solo parents. Ang pamilya ang unang tahanan ng lipunan. Let us make it safe and whole, even in the digital world. Salamat po, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Risa Ontiveros. Majority leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to also ask that, for the record, Senator Rafidulfo would like to insert his co-sponsorship speech of PSW Resolution Number 125, just for the record.
Yeah, it's ordered.
Mr. President, I move that all members present today be made as co-authors, Mr. President.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
And, Mr. President, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the proposed amendments of the measure, I move that we adopt Proposed Senate Resolution Number 125, subject to style. I so move, Mr. President.
Yes, there any objection? Hearing none, Proposed Senate Resolution Number 125, subject to style, is hereby adopted.
Congratulations to our sponsor, the senate president, to all the co-sponsors, Mr. President. Mr. President, we'd like to recognize our deputy majority floor leader, Senator Ersito.
Senator JB Ersito is recognized.
Mr. President, I move that we consider Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6. This is the resolution granting consent to Senate Majority Leader Juan Miguel Zubiri to accept the Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun. So move, Mr. President.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6 is in order. The secretary is directed to read the title of the resolution.
Concurrent Resolution Granting Consent to Senate Majority Leader Juan Miguel Miggs F. Zubiri to Accept the Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun conferred upon him by the government of Japan.
To sponsor the measure, I move to recognize Senator Lauren Legarda. So move, Mr. President.
Senator Lauren Legarda is recognized.
Mr. President, dear colleagues, I rise today to sponsor Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6, which I have the honor of introducing. As its author, I proudly express my support for Senate Majority Leader Juan Miguel Miggs F. Zubiri in his acceptance of the Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun to be conferred by the government of Japan. The Order of the Rising Sun was first created in 1875 to recognize individuals who have made notable contributions to the public and the Japanese nation, including foreign individuals who have paved the way for stronger relations between their people and the people of Japan. Currently, it is awarded in six classes, with the Grand Cordon being the highest class. Among the distinguished Filipino recipients of this highest honor are former senators Manuel Biviliar, Franklin Emdrilon, and Edgardo J. Angara, and former cabinet secretaries Carlos P. Romulo, Albert F. Del Rosario, Carlos G. Dominguez III, and Alberto G. Romulo. On the international stage, notable awardees include former Singaporean Prime Minister Lee Kuan Yew, former UNICEF Executive Director Carol Bellamy, and Microsoft co-founder Bill Gates. The confirmant of the Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun by the government of Japan to another Filipino is a testament to the Philippines' enduring commitment to strengthening its relations and cooperation with Japan. Senator Miggs Zubiri has exemplified these qualities and is truly deserving of this distinction. As former senate president, he advanced the Corporate Recovery and Tax Incentives for Enterprises to Maximize Opportunities for Reinvigorating the Economy or Create More Act, which generated livelihood opportunities for Filipinos while supporting exporters, including Japanese firms. He also advocated the Reciprocal Access Agreement to enhance regional security and spearheaded parliamentary exchanges with the National Diet of Japan during the 19th Congress. With his works being recognized by the government of Japan, I urge our esteemed colleagues to adopt this Concurrent Resolution granting consent to Senator Zubiri to accept the Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun conferred upon him by the government of Japan in accordance with Article 9B, Section 8 of the Constitution, which requires congressional consent before any public officer may accept a title from a foreign government. I congratulate Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri for being granted the privilege to accept such a prestigious title. May he continue to be our exemplar of statesmanship in cultivating harmonious relations, not just with the country of Japan, but with all nations. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Senator Legarda. Majority leader.
Yes, Mr. President, Senator Robin Padilla would like to co-sponsor Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6. I move that he be recognized.
Senator Robin Padilla is recognized.
Maraming salamat po, ginoong pangulo. Mga ginagalang kong kasama, buong puso ko pong sinusuportahan ang pagbibigay pahintulot sa ating kagalang-galang na senate Majority Leader Juan Miguel Miggs Zubiri na tanggapin ang Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun mula sa pamalaan ng Japan. Ang parangal po na ito ay karapat-dapat na pagkilala ng kanyang pamumuno at pagsusumikap na pagtibayin ang ugnayan ng Pilipinas sa Japan na pinututunayan ng kanyang track record at natatanging tatak ng serbisyo publiko para sa kabubuti ng ating bayan. Ipinaapaabot ko po, ang aking tauspusong pagbati sa aking lakhan, ang pangulupo ng arnis dito sa ating bayan, isang mandrigma. Ako po ay saludo sayo, kalakip ang aking kagustuhan maging co-sponsor at Concurrent Resolution Number 6 na inihain ni Senadora Lauren Legarda. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Senator Robin Padilla. Majority leader.
Mr. President, Senator Pia Caetano also would like to co-sponsor the resolution. I move that she be recognized.
Senator Pia Caetano is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to co-sponsor Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6, which grants consent to Senate Majority Leader Juan Miguel Miggs Zubiri to accept the Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun, an honor conferred upon him by the government of Japan. The Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun is awarded to individuals who have made exceptional contribution to the Japanese nation and its people. This prestigious distinction is also extended to foreign nationals who have played a pivotal role in strengthening ties between their countries and Japan. Under the leadership of Senator Zubiri, we witnessed the creation of the Reciprocal Access Agreement between the Philippines and Japan, an agreement designed to enhance security and defense cooperation in the Asia-Pacific region. As senate president, he also played a critical role in the successful hosting of the 31st Meeting of the Asia-Pacific Parliamentary Forum, a significant initiative spearheaded by former Japanese Prime Minister Yasuhiro Nakosone. Mr. President, I was also with the delegation of the then senate president Miggs Zubiri when we went to Japan. Holy week na holy week pa man din, may plano na ako sa pamilya ko. Pero nag-iinis siya, very with all his persuasive charms and talents, that full force po kaming pumunta sa Japan. And this was not a junket trip, Mr. President. Umagang umaga hanggang gabing gabi, eh kami ay paikot-ikot dun sa, basically in the Tokyo area, meeting in various government offices with the different high-ranking members of parliament, including the prime minister, Mr. President. So talaga namang sobra ang effort ng ating majority floor leader to enhance cooperation and strengthen the ties with Japan. So today, we celebrate a remarkable achievement as Senator Zubiri is honored with the Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun. This recognition is not only a reflection of his dedication to advancing the principles upheld by the Japanese government, but also of his unwavering commitment to fostering a strategic partnership between the Philippines and Japan. Senator Zubiri's partnership with Japan has been grounded in mutual respect and a shared vision for long-term cooperation, particularly in the areas of economic development and security. His efforts have indeed had tangible outcomes, further solidifying the ties between our two nations. With great respect and admiration, I proudly co-sponsored this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pia Caetano. Majority leader.
Yes, Mr. President, last to co-sponsor the measure is Senator Wigechalian. I move that he be recognized.
Senator Sherwin Gachalian is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, esteemed colleagues, I rise today to co-sponsor Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 6, Resolution Granting Consent to Senate Majority Leader Juan Miguel Miggs Zubiri to accept the Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun conferred upon him by the government of Japan. The Order of the Rising Sun was established 150 years ago, in 1875. It has seven classes, with the Grand Cordon being the highest of them all. This distinction is bestowed upon people who have made notable contributions to the Japanese nation and the public, including foreign individuals who have paved the way for stronger relationship, relations between their peoples and Japan. Mr. President, esteemed colleagues, dear friends, it is an honor to celebrate the dedication and commitment of a man who has given more than two decades of his life to bring our nation closer to the people of Japan in the spirit of friendship, harmonious relations, and mutual prosperity. His body of work speaks for itself. When he served this chamber as senate president, Senator Zubiri campaigned for the creation of a reciprocal access agreement between Japan and the Philippines, with the aim of strengthening security and defense in the Asia-Pacific region. The RIA outlines procedures for cooperative activities by the defense force of one country while visiting the other. And it defines the status of a visiting force. This allows for better coordination and aid in times of need. This will also lead to sustained joint exercises, smoother interoperability between our nations, and a stronger defense posture amid ongoing tensions in the West Philippine Sea. He spearheaded the restoration of the VAT exempt status of local sales to export-oriented enterprises outside economic zones under Republic Act 12066 or the Create More Act. Senator Zubiri also worked hard to ensure that Create More sets clear timelines on the VAT refund process. This was a major concern of Japanese investors in the Philippines. And if my memory is correct, Senator Zubiri went on a parliamentary mission to Japan in 2023 and heard this concern from former Japanese Prime Minister Fumio Kishida himself. Thus, improving this process was critical in maintaining Japanese investor trust and confidence. President Zubiri's efforts, Senator Zubiri's efforts, saved jobs and bolstered the Philippines' reputation as a destination for foreign investments. In the diplomatic sphere, our majority leader led vital exchanges with our legislative counterparts, the National Diet of Japan. And it was through Senator Zubiri's initiative that the Philippine Senate, together with the Philippine House of Representatives, held a historic joint session to hear a policy address from former Prime Minister Kishida. Across the areas of defense, economic policy, and parliamentary diplomacy, Senator Zubiri advanced concrete areas of collaboration between the Philippines and Japan, collaboration that I am sure will bear fruit in the sharing of best practices, the exchange of innovation in technology, and affirmation of our shared values of peace, solidarity, and cooperation. This is a rare achievement, and Senator Zubiri's example sends an important message in these troubled times. Let us bring people together. Let us recognize that there are more things that unite us than divide us. Let us live in a way that creates a genuine sense of empathy among nations, which will inspire those who come after us to build bridges of peace and will endure for generations. Congratulations to my friend, Senator Zubiri. This is an accolade well deserved. I am sure you will enjoy many more years of achievement, success, and distinguished service. Thank you, Mr. President, esteemed colleagues.
Thank you, Senator Gachalian. Majority leader.
Mr. President, last to co-sponsor the Senate Concurrent Resolution is Senator Risa Ontiveros. I move that she be recognized.
Senator Risa Ontiveros is recognized.
Salamat po, Mr. President. Naayos ko lamang pong idagdag 'yung aking tinig sa pagpugay at pagsabi ng mabuhay ng ating kapulungan kay Senate Majority Leader Juan Miguel Miggs Zubiri. Sa ating pagpapayag na kanyang tanggapin ang Grand Cordon of the Order of the Rising Sun na ibinibigay sa kanya ng pamahalaan ng Japan. Mr. President, the Order of the Rising Sun ay isang Japanese order na itinatag noong taong 1875 ni Emperor Meiji, na siya namang ama ng Meiji Restoration sa Japan. Isang panahon ng pambihirang, pagbabagong anyo ng lipunan at bayan ng Japan sa panahong iyon. Nawaw sa ganyang diwa, magpatuloy ang mga ambag ni Majority Leader Miggs sa pagbabagong anyo din ng ating bayan sa gitna ng napakaraming hamon. Sana din, sa kanyang pagiging pinuno ng bansang Pilipinas at kaibigan ng bansang Hapon, ay kalaunan makaambag siya sa resolusyon ng ilang mga makasaysayan ng heartache sa pagitan ng ating dalawang bansa, partikular 'yung usapin ang pagbibigay ng hustisya sa ating mga comfort women. So maraming salamat po, Mr. President, at muli mabuhay kay Miggs sa kanyang pagtanggap nitong karangalang ito. Salamat po, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Risa. Majority leader.
Mr. President, Senator Bongo would like his co-sponsorship speech be inserted to the records.
It's ordered.
Yes, Mr. President, before I move for the adoption, I'd just like to also add that I was part of the group when Senate President, then Senate President Miggs Zubiri scheduled that parliamentary visit to Japan. We had a call with the Prime Minister Fumio Kishida, and he actually invited the Prime Minister to come to the country. And it was Senate President Miggs Zubiri who was the architect of the joint session, which was historic because Prime Minister Fumio Kishida addressed both houses of Congress. So, and I was there, and we were always together in our advocacy of helping strengthen our Coast Guard, our armed forces. And I think we have made strides during our visits to France and others, and most especially Japan, through the RIA, with the ratification of the RIA agreement. And of course, our well-known Mr. Congeniality is the only senate president who even sang a birthday song to the speaker of the diet then, no? So... So with that, I'm proud to have been part of that group, Mr. President, and Senator Zubiri indeed deserves to be given such an honor. With that, Mr. President, there being no member who wishes to interpolate or propose amendments to the measure, I move that we adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Six. Subject style, so move, Mr. President.
Is there any objection? Hearing non-Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Six, subject to style, is hereby adopted. Congratulations.
Mr. President, with the permission of the body, I move that all present members will be made co-authors of this resolution.
So ordered.
Mr. President.
You are recognized.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to give my utmost appreciation and thanks to all our distinguished colleagues who co-sponsored the measure. Senator Lauren Legarda, who's been my ate for the longest time. I also had the distinct honor to sponsor her award by the French government. It was a Légion de Honor of the French government, the highest award given by the French government to individuals for also their, of course, also their award given to individuals that helped strengthen ties between two countries in France. I'd also like to thank, of course, Senator Robin Hood Padilla. Senator Sherwin Gachalian was with us in that very historic trip. Senator Pia Kaitano as well was with us in that very historic trip where we, together with Senator J V Herschito, we were elevens. Eleven senators, eleven senators, Mr. President, so much so that because of the number of senators in that trip, they granted us a visit with the, or a meeting with the Prime Minister Kishida. And because of that meeting, we were able to push forward the reciprocal access agreement training of our soldiers and their soldiers, both in Japan and in the Philippines, particularly also in Coast Guard training, because they had donated more ships to the Coast Guard as well as ships to our Philippine Navy. And it strengthened the ties between our two countries. And we also did a personal invitation to Prime Minister Kishida to come to the Philippines, which he did in that historic visit, the first Prime Minister of Japan to address both Houses of Congress. And on a side note, my children, when they saw the letter, they asked me, "Dada, are you now samurai?" Akala nila night hood ako ng Emperor ng Japan. Sabi ko, "It's just an award." Akala nila magiging samurai na ako. So once again, to my dear colleagues, to the Senate President, the Senate President Protemp, and to all the members that are here, domo regato, gosemas. Thank you very much.
Again, congratulations. Majority Leader.
Maraming maraming salamat, Mr. President. We'd now like to recognize to avail of the privilege our distinguished colleague from the Republic of the Philippines, so other than Senator Erwin Tulfo.
Senator Erwin Tulfo is recognized.
Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, I rise today on a matter of urgent national concern. Habang ginaganap po ngayon sa ating bansa ang FIVB Men's Volleyball World Championship, a global sporting event that should bring pride and joy to the Filipino fans, two serious issues have stained its integrity. Una, the Philippine National Volleyball Federation, under the leadership of Mr. Ramon Susara, has allowed the promotion of One X Bet, an online gambling operator that is illegal in the Philippines. Illegal po ito, bawal. At malinaw na under the law, online gambling operators without proper license from POG Corp. and Regulation are prohibited. Ang tanong ko po ngayon, Ginong Pangulo, bakit pinayaga ng PNBF ang isang kompanyang labag sa ating batas na magadvertise sa isang prestigiosong international event na nakatuon dapat sa sports development at kabataan? Mr. President, are we sending the message to our youth that illegal gambling is acceptable? Basta may pera, that the prestige of a sporting event like volleyball can be auctioned off to the highest bidder kahit bawal? Ikalawa, the matter of ticket prices, Mr. President, mga kababayan. The ticket for this event no mga unang araw range from 15,000 at ang pinakamura ay 1,500. 15,000 pesos para makapanood lang po ng volleyball. Sino namang po ang makakibili ng ganyang kamahal na ticket? Siyempre, hindi po ang ordinaryong estudyante. Hindi rin po ay mga mahilig sa volleyball sa probinsya o mga batang nangangarap na maging volleyball players. This is not inclusion, Mr. President. This is exclusion. Instead of bringing volleyball closer to the people, we are driving them away. Instead of inspiring the youth, we are telling them, "Sports is only for the rich." At nang tanungin po si PNBF President Susara tungkol dito, ang sagot niya, "We cannot please everybody." Mr. President, this is arrogance of the highest order. Public trust, public responsibility, and sports development are not about pleasing everybody. They're about fairness, integrity, and inclusivity. Kaya malinaw ang tanong ko kay Mr. Susara, Mr. President, why is an illegal gambling entity allowed in this tournament? Pangalawa, why are Filipino fans are being priced out of this international event held in their own soil? Three, and why does the leadership of PNBF dismiss this legitimate concern so lightly as if the Filipino people do not matter? Mr. President, colleagues, this is not just about volleyball. This is about governance, accountability, and the message we send to our people. Kung dito po sa larangan ng sports, lantara na ang kapabayaan at kawalang malasakit, what more in other bigger arenas? I call on this chamber, Mr. President, to investigate these matters, to hold the PNBF accountable and to protect both the integrity of sports and the welfare of Filipino fans. Mr. President, colleagues, let us not allow volleyball, a sport of passion and unity, to be tainted by illegal gambling and illicit practices. Maraming salamat po, Ginong Pangulo. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat.
Thank you, Senator Tulfo. Majority Leader.
Mr. President, I move that the speech of a distinguished gentleman, oh, sorry. We recognize Senator Pia Kaitano's presence.
To interpolate, Senator Pia Kaitano is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was in the lounge when his honor, Senator Tulfo, took the floor. I just would like to share some insight, not really an interpolation, just to share some information with the honorable Senator. I too was very shocked when I heard that his honor had pointed out that there was an online gaming logo. I was very shocked because I'm very anti-online gaming. My colleagues know that, no? And as a former national team member of volleyball, and actually included in the delegation that has bidet for international events, including basketball, FIBA, which we hosted a year ago, and volleyball, which we're hosting now, I was shocked because, over my dead body, to put it bluntly, no? So I immediately asked my staff to inquire, and it so happened that, I'm not sure if it was the day after I heard his honor's statement, na taon naman na may laban ang Philippine team, so nanood po tayo, at yun po 'yung nanalo sila, so siyempre, masaya lahat. But before that, as I sat down, kusang nagkwento po sa akin si Thats, no? That's the nickname of Mr. Susara. Sabi niya, "Sen, 'yung concern ni Senator Tulfo, paabot mo naman na ano..." Actually, he didn't really say "paabot" because I think nagstatement na siya, so parang ipiniliwanag ko naman, something like that, no? Pinaliwanag ko noong nainterview ko pagdating, kasi siyempre, 'yung media nandun naman lahat, na itong logo na'to, hindi mo yan makikita dito. Sabi ko, "Kaya nga," nagtataka ako, kasi I was in the opening, mabilis po ang matako sa mga, ano eh, sa mga, 'yung mga galit ko, mabilis ang matako dyan eh. Pag nakakita ako ng vapes, alam mo 'yan ang mga colleagues natin, napa, nagnanod po ng head si Senator Risa who's in front of me. Makakita lang ako dyan. Ano, I'm very reactive, no? Pagbawal. So sabi ko, "Parang hindi ko yan nakita." And ang explanation niya sa akin is, "You can only see that online and only in the international channel. Hindi siya available through the local network that is the local partner for hosting, for showing the event, no?" So in other words, kung Filipino ka at I think, tama ba? Ayoko magkamali, signal 'yung partner nila, wala 'yung logo na yan sa signal. And then sa event itself, wala rin. So sabi niya, "Yung nakikita mong nakaganyan, that is already the kagagawan niyo noong international sponsor." And as international events go, again, I am also quite, I'm not an expert, but a bit familiar, kasi nag-host din tayo ng paddle tournament, international paddle tournament, plus yun nga po 'yung basketball. May global sponsor, the way it works is, may global sponsors ang international entities. So if it's an international volleyball federation, if it's an international basketball federation, international football federation, may global sponsors sila. Hindi po yun sponsor ng local entity. Now, I think the responsibility of the local entity is to ensure that hindi nga yan maging sponsor dito sa venue natin, kasi bawal yan, and hindi po tayo nagbibigay na excuse. Make very clear, galit po ako dyan sa mga bawal na mga produktong yan. Hindi yan dapat napapaki, hindi yan dapat inadverteised dito. So I guess that's the point that I wanted to share. And in fairness lang to Mr. Susara, he gave a lengthy interview explaining this soon after his honor Senator Tulfo made his observation. So to be clear, the logos are not used in any local venue. They are also, they recognize that the Philippines cannot be used as a platform for this illegal, it is considered illegal in the Philippines. Signal TV is also aware of that, and One Sport or Signal TV does not have and does not use and does not display those sponsors. Finally, POG Corp. also informed them beforehand that the usage of the logos is not allowed. So parang in fairness lang naman dun sa organizer, mukha naman, ginawa naman nila 'yung part nila na ipaalam na dun sa international groups na bawal ito sa Pilipinas. Yun lang naman po, Mr. President.
Thank you po. Mr. President, yes, thank you for bringing that up, Madam, Mr. President. Ang sa akin lamang po, kasi napapanood po 'yung online, not really sa TV, kundi po sa online, sa Facebook. The problem here, Mr. President, is that visible po siya sa Filipino audience also. If you sign in, if you have a Facebook account, makikita niyo po 'yung One X Bet na yan. Tama namang po ang senadora na hindi po nakita yan sa TV network, wala po yan, pero pagpumunta ka po sa Facebook, makikita mo po, nagpa-flash po 'yung One X Bet, Madam Senator.
Concern po ako dyan, so Mr. President, alam mo ba ng ating colleague kung anong Facebook account yun? Kasi kung local, kunyari, ni-replay po yan ng local group or ng POG Corp., or for that matter, a local volleyball network. Talagang kailangan anuhin natin yan, pagsabihan. Basta ang sa atin, and I don't know, maybe we can ask the ICT, na how do we restrict when it's international? So yun lang, hindi ko talaga then kayang itolerate if it is shown by a local Facebook, like somebody who controls, the Facebook account is owned by a local entity. Pero kung international, that is a problem, because I don't know kung papano natin makukontrol yun.
Thank you, Mr. President. Salamat po. Knowing that the lady from Taguig is also an anti-gambling advocate, maraming maraming salamat po. Mr. President, we will provide the Senator from Taguig, 'yung copy po, na kulang po namin ng screenshots sa isang, sa ilang Facebook accounts po, na nakikita po 'yung One X Bet.
Sorry, Mr. President, pwede hong pakiulet lang 'yung sinabi niyo?
Una po, nagpapasalamat po ako, Mr. President.
Thank you, narinig ko yun, thank you then. Makahihihahay sahod tayo dyan.
What I'm saying is that we will provide, Mr. President, to the lady from Taguig, yun po mga Facebook accounts where, na screenshot po namin, na lumalabas po 'yung One X Bet.
Oo, yes. And then pwede rin natin ibatuyan sa POG Corp., because I believe sila'y nagre-regulate, no? Dahil kahit ako, I would be very bothered, ang strict natin dito, tapos hindi pala, hindi pala natin kayang i-regulate na 'yung mismong local, pwede din dagdagan ng campaign natin, no? Dun sa mga bawal na nakikiride on sa all the good benefits that we can get out of sports.
Yes, maraming salamat po, Mr. President.
Sige, thank you, Mr. President. Again, I also wanted to thank his honor for bringing that up, kasi naconcern din naman ako doon, pero I hope nakadagdag din ako sa pagpapaliwanag na wala naman intention ang PNBF to promote them. But we will all be supportive in making sure that these entities that are not allowed to advertise in the Philippines do not get any space here in our territory. Thank you, Mr. President.
Now that, Mr. President, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, oh, yes, we would like to recognize our distinguished Deputy Majority Leader, Senator Risa Taveras, if the gentleman would like also to allow her to ask a few questions.
Senator Risa Taveras is recognized.
Salamat, Mr. President. Good gentleman, maikling manifestation lang po, tatlong punto, at ma-appreciate ko po kung gusto niyong magkomento sa kahit alin sa mga puntong ito.
Go ahead, po.
Salamat, Mr. President. Una po, 'yung isa po sa mga anak ko ay nagiging volleyball enthusiast, kaya't sinubaybayan po niya itong kasalukuyang tournament, opo, tournament, at nagawa ng paraan na makapanood dun sa isa sa mga games na naglaro 'yung, I think, 'yung team ng Japan, dahil isa po yun sa mga paborito ng mga volleyball enthusiasts ngayon. Nireklamo din po niya, Mr. President, 'yung isang pinoint out ng, ah, good gentleman, mula sa palawan, na bakit mama, ang mahal-mahal na mga tickets? So ang nabili lang nila no'ng mga kaibigan niya, dahil mga young working people din, 'yung medyo nasa taas na, pero pagdungaw nila, kitang-kita nila na 'yung mga sections, 'yung mga seats na mas malapit sa court, halos walang nakaupo, dahil nga po, napakamahal. So paano po talaga maaafford? Sabi niya, "Sayang mama, dumadami 'yung mga Filipino volleyball enthusiasts na pwede sanang manood, tangkilikin itong game na'to, suportahan 'yung ating national team at 'yung iba pang mga teams na minamahal na rin ang mga Filipino volleyball enthusiasts." So sabi niya, "Bakit masyado namang pinrise out of range no'ng mga gustong manood 'yung mga tickets?" Pangalawa, Mr. President, meron pong isang senior citizen na babae, nag-message po sa akin sa Messenger, sumalamang sa Facebook din po niya na papanood itong games. Napansin po niya, 'yung ipinakita ng good gentleman, lalo na dito sa upper-left slide nila, kitang-kita po sa sahig ng volleyball court, 'yung One X Bet. Kaya nagreklamo din siya, "Bakit kitang-kita parang, ayan po, naadverteised tuloy dito sa upper-left slide, dun sa upper-left din na portion, kitang-kita po 'yung One X Bet." Sabi niya, "Akala ko ba, ano, papunta na tayo sa strict regulation kung hindi man banning ng online gambling, eh kitang-kita dito sa isang tanyag na sports event." So yun po 'yung pangalawang observation na gusto kong ibahagi, good gentleman, mula sa palawan. At 'yung huli po, balik po ako dun sa observasyon ng anak ko at mga kaibigan nila. Sabi niya, "Mama, pag pumupunta kami, halimbawa sa mall, habang tumatakbo itong volleyball tournament na'to, napapansin po namin ang daming mga turistang Hapon na sumusunod sa kanilang national team. Sila naglalakbay para lang panoorin 'yung team nila maglaro, kahit sa ibang bansa." Sabi niya, "At kasama pa nila 'yung kanilang mga pamilya." Sabi niya, "At kasama pa nila 'yung kanilang mga pamilya." Sabi niya, "Sayang, hindi sinamantala na i-maximize ito para din sa ating domestic tourism." Dahil naglalakbay na rin lang naman sila, mga Japanese, uh, tourists, kasama pa nun kanilang pamilya. Sana na-maximize na offeran sila na mga tour packages, whether dito sa Metro Manila or kahit sa mga kalapit lalawigan, habang andito lang naman sila para panoorin at suportahan 'yung kanilang national team." So 'yun lamang po, uh, good gentleman, mula sa Palawan. Ilang pong mga obserbasyon, uh, mula sa mga kababayan natin, mga kabataan at hanggang mga senior citizen na napupukaw 'yung kanilang concerns sa mga kaugnay na issue habang pinanunood itong, uh, volleyball games na binring sa atensyon natin ng good gentleman mula sa Palawan.
Para sa kalaman po ng, uh, ah, ating pong butihing senadora, binabaan na po daw 'yung kanilang ticket. Pero ang tanong po, is it lower compared to international benchmarks and the purchasing power of Filipino fans? Medyo hindi pa rin po eh. At tsaka pangalawa po, binabaan nila kasi nilalangaw na po, sayang, wala na pong nanunood. And then, we, we sponsored that game tournament po. We paid, uh, so much money for this tournament. Tapos, wala pong return, uh, Mr. President. Thank you po.
Salamat, Mr. President at good gentleman. Diba, sayang eh, first time yata nating i-host itong, uh, global tournament. And napapansin daw no'ng ibang mga national teams, parang nagtatanungan sila, "Nasan na 'yung mga manunood? Nasan na 'yung mga audiences?" Nakakalungkot naman at nakakahiya din po. We could have done much, much better. Salamat, uh, good gentleman, mula sa Palawan. Salamat, Mr. President.
Maraming salamat po.
And Mr. President, uh, yes?
Senator Pia Caetano is recognized.
Just for the information of all, um, I just want to put on record then kasi may alam din naman ako tungkol sa pagpaplano nitong volleyball event na ito. Uh, kasama from the start ang Department of Tourism. And, uh, from the start, uh, all the, um, the, uh, countries, no, that qualified to, uh, to participate, uh, were, well, I, I don't know the exact details. I'm not involved with DOT's plan. But definitely, um, the idea was to really involve DOT from the very start so that precisely, not just... Kasi marami dun sa players, sorry sa mga fans, pero marami dyan may girlfriend at may asawa. So kasama ang mga girlfriend at asawa. At, um, 'yung mga partners nila, ipinapasyal po 'yan. Uh, alam ko po 'yun kasi not this particular tournament, but there's the world nations that, that we also have hosted many times. 'Yan 'yung pinupuntahan ng mga bata. I'm sure 'yung anak ni Senator Riza, 'yan 'yung tinutukoy niyang, napupuntahan niya. And, uh, ine-entertain po natin na Philippines is known to be one of the best host talaga. Uh, I can at least attest for that part na 'yung typical Filipino hospitality nakakarating not just sa players, sa coaches and their team, but, um, pati sa mga supporters nila. As to how effective it is, of course, we would all like to know na namamaximize kasi tama naman din 'yung concern na ni raised ni Senator Riza na sana namamaximize kasi gusto talaga natin mamaximize na maikot nila ang buong, kung pwedeng buong Pilipinas sa mga nanunood po sila dito. 'Yun lang naman ang karagdagang info na gusto ko lang i-share sa, sa lahat po.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Majority Leader.
Mr. President, with the permission of the body, we move that the privileged speech of Senator Erwin Tulfo and all its interpolations and manifestations be referred to the Committees on Sports and Games and Amusements. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. So referred.
Mr. President, we just have, uh, uh, other matters before we adjourn. We'd like to, with the permission of the body, move to elect as chairperson sans, uh, our distinguished colleague, Senator Lauren Legarda. She gave her, uh, uh, her goal signal, that she be replaced as the chairperson of the Committee on Accounts and to elect as chairman of the Committee on Accounts, Senator Panfilo Ping Laxon, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Well, Senator Laxon is recognized.
With a heavy but whole heart, I accept, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Ping Laxon is, um, elected chairman of the Committee on Accounts.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just, we'd like just to put on record that also if we can ask the committee or the Rules Committee to make sure that Senator Lauren is still made a member of the committee and the good chairman would like to make her vice chairman of the committee.
So noted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, pursuant to Rule 10, Section 13 of the Rules of the Senate, I move to elect the following members standing committees. For the Committee on Energy and the Part of the Minority, I move to elect Senator Winga Chalian as vice, uh, vice chairman, chairperson. Senators Bam Akino, Senators Lito Lapid, Senator Legarda, Senator Pangilinan, and Senator Tulfo. And on the Part of the Minority, Senator Rafi Tulfo, for clarity. And Senator Marco Letta as additional vice chairperson. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. The enumerated names are elected into the Committee on Energy.
For the Committee on Science and Technology and the Part of the Majority, I move to elect Senator Pia Caetano upon the instruction of the chairperson, uh, to designate her as vice chairperson of the committee. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, for the Committee on Sustainable Development Goals, Innovations, and Futures Thinking, I move to elect on the Part of the Majority, Senator Camille Villares, vice chairperson. And members are Senator, uh, Lito Lapid and Senator Lauren Legarda. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
For, upon consultation with Senator Ersito, uh, Mr. President, as chairperson, the following are retained as members of the Committee on Tourism. On the Part of the Majority, Senators Winga Chalian, Senator Lito Lapid, Senator Lauren Legarda, Senator, uh, Francis Pangilinan, Senator Rafi Tulfo, Senator Camille Villar, and Senator Mark Villar, with Senator De La Rosa as vice chairperson. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, for the Committee on Banks and Financial Institutions, I move to elect, uh, Senator Alan Caetano as vice chairperson and as members of the majority, Senator Mark Villar, Senator Lauren Legarda, Senator Francis Pangilinan, Senator Winga Chalian, and Senator Camille Villar. And on part of the minorities, Senator, uh, Christopher Bongo, Senator Jesus Scudero, and Senator Rodante Marcoletta. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, uh, for the Rules Committee, I move to elect the following members on the Part of the Minority, Senator Bato De La Rosa and Senator Marcoletta. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, uh, for the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources and Climate Change, I move to elect, on the Part of the Minority, Senator, uh, Christopher Bongo, Senator Estrada, Jingo Estrada, Senator Bato De La Rosa, Senator Marcoletta, and Senator Padilla. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
For the Committee on Higher Technical and Vocational Education, I move to elect Senators Christopher Goh. For the Part of the Minority, Senators Christopher Goh, Senator Jingo Estrada, Senator Bato De La Rosa, Senator Marcoletta, and Senator Scudero, Mr. President. So move.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
For the Committee on Accounts, Mr. President, I move to elect, on the Part of the Minority, Senator Christopher Goh, Bongo, Senator Marcoletta, Senator De La Rosa, and Senator Padilla. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, on the part, for the, uh, Committee on Government Corporations and Public Enterprises, I move to elect, on the Part of the Minority, Senators Christopher Bongo, Senator Rodante Marcoletta, and Senator Bato De La Rosa.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, uh, for, uh, Committee on Urban Planning, Housing, and Resettlement, I move to elect, on the Part of the Minority, Senator Christopher Bongo as vice chairperson and as member, Senator Marcoletta. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
On the part of, rather, for the Committee on Urban Planning, Housing, and Resettlement, I move to elect the following, uh, Senator Jingo Estrada as vice chairperson and the members of the majority are Senators Lito Lapid, Senator Mark Villar, Senator Camille Villar, Senator Rafi Tulfo, Senator Erwin Tulfo, Senator Lauren Legarda, and on the Part of the Minority, Senator Rodante Marcoletta and Senator Christopher Bongo. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Mr. President, for the Committee on Cultural Communities and Muslim Affairs, I move to elect the following. As vice chairperson, Senator Christopher Bongo and Senator Lauren Legarda. And as members of the majority, Senators Mark Villar, Erwin, Senator Erwin Tulfo, and Senator Camille Villar. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
For the Committee on Youth, I move to elect, as member, on the Part of the Minority, Senator Marcos. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
For the Committee on Constitutional Amendments and Revision of Codes, I move to elect Senator Pia Caetano's vice chairperson and members of the majority are Senators Bam Akino, Senator Sherwin Gachalian, Senator Lapid, and Senator Legarda. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
On the part, or for the Committee, rather, on Labor Employment and Human Resource Development, I move to elect Senator Amy Marcos as vice chairperson and members of the minority, or majority, rather, Mr. President, Senators Bam Akino, Senator Winga Chalian, Senator Lito Lapid, Senator Erwin Tulfo, Senator Mark Villar, and Senator Camille Villar. And as members of the Part of the Minority, Senators Robin Hood Padilla, Senator Bongo, Senator Jingo Estrada, and Senator Rodante Marcoletta.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
For the Committee on Migrant Workers, I move to elect Senator Christopher Bongo as vice chairperson and as members, on the Part of the Majority, Senator Bam Akino, Senator Winga Chalian, Senator Lito Lapid, Senator Lauren Legarda, Senator Erwin Tulfo, and Senator Mark Villar. And, uh, on the Part of the Minority, Senators Robin Hood Padilla, Senator Jingo Estrada, Senator Amy Marcos, and Senator De La Rosa. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
And, Mr. President, in view of the reorganization of the Senate pursuant to Article 6, Section 17 of the 1987 Constitution, I move to elect the following members as members of the Senate Electoral Tribunal. Uh, namely, Senator Pia Caetano, Senator Kiko Pangilinan, Senator Bam Akino, Senator Camille Villar, Senator Alan Caetano, and Senator Robin Hood Padilla. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Enumerated names are hereby elected to the Senate Electoral Tribunal.
And as well as for the Committee on Public Information and Mass Media, I move to elect the following. Um, Senator... These are new members? May I ask for a minute's suspension, Mr. President?
Session suspended.
Ready to resume, Mr. President?
Session resumed.
Mr. President, um, we, with due apologies, uh, there is a mistake coming from the staff uh, that would be read "The Committee on Urban Planning, Housing, and Resettlement", it was a wrong heading. It's the Committee on Public Info and Mass Media. So again, let me correct. Uh, the earlier manifestation on urban planning, housing, and settlement is to be disregarded. And we are now calling that the members of the Committee on Public Info and Mass Media be Senator Estrada as vice chairperson and as members on the Part of the Majority, Senator Lito Lapid, Senator Mark Villar, Senator Camille Villar, Senator Rafi Tulfo, Senator Erwin Tulfo, and Senator Legarda. And on the Part of the Minority, Senator Rodante Marcoletta and Senator Christopher Goh. Mr. President, I so move.
Any objection? Hearing none. The correction is made. Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, for the Committee on Local Government, I move to elect, as members of the Part of the Majority, Senators Winga Chalian, Senator Lito Lapid, Senator Rafi Tulfo, Senator Mark Villar, Senator Bam Akino, Senator Camille Villar, Senator, and Senator Lauren Legarda. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
And, uh, we'd also like to move to elect Senator Rafi Tulfo as member of the Committee on Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development, Vice Senator Lito Lapid. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
With that, Mr. President, I move that we adjourn the session until 3 o'clock in the afternoon Wednesday, September 24, 2025. I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. The session is adjourned until 3 o'clock in the afternoon of Wednesday, September 24, 2025.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. President.